Good afternoon, everybody. Oops, here comes Jessica, hooray. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, Jess.
Sorry, sorry.
Oops, hey, that's all right. I know. Alrighty, it's two forty-six, June third, twenty twenty-five, and we are going to start the study session.
Would you like a roll call?
Yes, please.
Councilor Kosa?
Here.
Councilor Beal?
Here.
Mayor Protem Woodruff?
Here.
Mayor Yasi?
Here.
And Councilor Gonzalez?
Here.
The next item on the agenda, Mayor, is reading of the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement.
This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'chou, Ute, Hicaria Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Dunai Navajo Nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step toward inclusion and reconciliation.
The next item on the agenda is the legislative update with Peggy O'Keefe. I believe she should be online, Evan?
And promoted, yes, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to give Peggy O'Keefe an opportunity to kind of give a presentation in regards to the legislative year at the state. A wrap-up, Peggy does help us and represent us with our legislative agenda in Denver, so she's going to be doing a presentation of just letting know kind of what happened at the end of the year, what we've wrapped up on some of the things we work together with.
Should I go ahead and get started?
Yes, we are good.
Perfect, great. Well, thank you all for the opportunity to join you today. I just wanted to provide a brief update on the legislative session and, as City Manager indicated, provide kind of a brief wrap-up on some of the issues that we looked at this session. As you know, it was a one-hundred-and-twenty-day legislative session that started in January and concluded on the seventh of May. We had over six-hundred-and-fifty bills introduced and almost thirty out of a hundred new legislators. So, a lot of opportunity for educating new legislators on some of the policy issues, particularly those applying to local governments. As I'm certain you read about, one of the largest hurdles the legislature had to address was balancing the budget and addressing the $1.2 billion shortfall. The budget, as it did pass and was sent to the governor, eliminated a number of social programs. It did reduce transportation spending and left some of the new funding formula for K through twelve in a bit of a predicament. But deep cuts were not seen and were largely avoided in K through twelve healthcare and higher ed. The budget shortfall is expected to continue and be a challenge in the upcoming years. There was an effort for taper reform this session. It did not go anywhere, but I do expect that's going to be reintroduced again in 2026. And really, until they address some sort of taper reform, we'll continue to see a cut to the budget and challenges with any new programs that have any potential fiscal appropriations attached to them. So, we, just one more thing on the budget. As you know, the feds are looking at additional cuts to the state's Medicaid programs. They may have up to a billion-dollar cut, which would require that our Colorado Legislature go back into session and cut more from our state budget to address that. Because we're a state that needs to be in a balanced budget, it would likely require the legislature or the governor to call a special session. Right now, the rumors are that that may be in August or September. So, we'll continue to keep you posted on that. And if there is a legislative call to go into session, I really do expect it to stay focused on the budget and potentially legislation around AI. But they will only be able to have bills that fit within that special call, so they won't be able to bring up random bills on issues that aren't a part of those discussions. There will also be several interim committees that will continue to watch this summer and we'll expect to see legislation come out of those committees, particularly transportation and water interim committees. So, we'll keep you posted on the happenings there. In terms of bills that we weighed in on and monitor closely this session, just wanted to highlight a few of the big ones. House Bill, oh, and I should mention, the governor hasn't told June sixth to sign legislation, so he still has a few more days. One of the big bills that's still out there that may potentially get some sort of PR around it is the Workers Comp Bill. It's up in the air whether the governor is going to sign it or veto it. His office has indicated mixed messages throughout the session and after the session, but we'll see something on that here in the next few days. And of course, if the governor doesn't sign or veto a bill, it will become law without his signature. So, we've got a few more that we're watching, but wanted to give you an update on those that have had final action. The first is House Bill ten fifty-six. This was the local government permitting on wireless telecommunications. The bill was, came out of an interim committee to try to improve telecommunications in the state and look to streamline the permitting process for wireless services. The bill was heavily amended in the legislature to align with federal timelines in terms of permitting timelines on when permits need to be issued. It did add language as well that provided a forty-five-day tolling option for local governments if they need an extension of time when looking at those permits. And that bill was sent to the governor, though nothing's been done with it yet. House Bill ten seventy-seven, this is the backflow prevention devices requirement. This bill was introduced to address changes that were made in the plumbing sunset in 2024. The bill mistakenly required that the operators have a plumber's license. This bill went in and specified that if you're only inspecting, testing, or repairing backflow prevention devices, you do not need a plumbing occupational license. So, the goal again was to try to streamline for local governments and those in the water business. The bill was signed by the governor and is going into effect shortly. House Bill eleven forty-seven, this was a big bill that we watched fairness and transparencies in municipal court. This was one of several bills that really looked at the municipal court system and tried to reform local government's authorities in this space. It capped the maximum incarceration sentence for a municipal violation that has a comparable state law crime associated with it and said that the sentence could only be the same length of time as the state-level offense. And mandatory minimum and increased penalties based on prior convictions would be prohibited unless a person is convicted of a municipal offense for which there is a comparable state offense. This bill was a big fight as it went through the legislature. The governor did veto the bill when it went to his desk. I expect that we'll see some variation of this bill in the 2026 legislature, but for now, this is when the municipalities were really united in imposing and successfully got a veto out of the governor for it. So, that was a good one. Another one that raised a lot of concerns from municipalities is House Bill eleven sixty-nine. This was the Yimby Bill. Yes, in my backyard was what it was nicknamed, and this was a housing developments on faith and educational lands. The governor brought this bill to require jurisdictions to allow residential development to be constructed on a qualifying property that does not contain and exempt parcels subject to administrative approval process. And the idea behind this was to continue to push for additional residential development. This is kind of a follow-up for the governor's affordable housing initiatives over the last couple of years. The bill was laid over, effectively killing it for this legislative session, but again, there may be a variation of this that comes up in 2026. The next bill that we watched closely was eleven seventy-one. This was the PAOPO bill, possessions of weapons by a previous offender. The bill added motor vehicle thefts in the first degree to the list of offenses qualifying for the crime of possession of weapons by a previous offender. This is a bill that the legislature has been working on for several years. It finally passed the legislative session and was signed by the governor. And so, this one is probably in good shape. I don't expect that we'll see anything next year on it since we finally got it across the finish line. House Bill twelve fourteen, concerning measures to make appropriate use of prison beds. This was a very controversial bill that required a court determination that incarceration is the most appropriate course of action for Class V and Class VI felonies. It changes parole consideration for low-risk offenders and amend statutes around drug programming for parolees to reflect current practices. This bill was laid over, effectively killing it. I do expect we'll see a variation of this bill next year come back for sure, but we were able to prevent this bill from getting through the legislature this session. One of the big bills that municipalities worked with the business community on this year was construction defects legislation for middle-market housing. This was House Bill twelve seventy-two, and it was a bill that was intended to try to reduce the cost of insurance and litigation for construction defects and spur development, particularly around condominiums that have really decreased in development over the last couple decades. It puts in place a third-party licensed professional that would go in to inspect building developments as they're occurring and then provide developers who have received a positive feedback to be able to use that as an affirmative defense for construction claims brought against that professional. It also changed the requirement to bring a suit for HOAs from fifty percent to sixty-five percent of the vote and updated the statute of limitations. The bill was sent to the governor and signed. I think the concern on this bill is that perhaps it didn't go as far as some folks, particularly the development community, would like it to go. So, although I'm not sure that we'll see anything next year, I think there will continue to be discussions around construction defects in future years, so we may see something in the next couple of years. One bill that was a priority of CML was twelve seventy-six. This was court actions related to failure to appear. This was trying to address the issue of defendants who aren't showing up for municipal court five, six, seven, ten times. So, this is if you have at least two failure to appears. It provides the court with the ability to try to discourage defendants and provides a prohibition or changes the current prohibition on monetary bonds. The bill unfortunately did not make it through committee this year, so they're going to work on it this summer and fall and look at bringing that bill back next session. And that was kind of the list that I have of some of the bills that we watched closely, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to get additional information and send it to you on any other bills that you might have thoughts on and happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Anybody have any questions? No, well, thank you. We're good.
Well, great. Thank you so much and really appreciate the council's help this year as well as staff. Jose did a great job, so appreciate that. Thank you.
The next strategical area is safety and quality of life with the first report from our Public Safety Office.
Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Devin Connor. I'm the Special Operations Commander for the Durango Police Department and standing in for Chief Current today. I think we should have a slideshow up here. What was that? Through the glass, perfect. All right. Our vision is one department, one community, and one Durango. And we are committed to building trust, protecting the vulnerable, and preventing crime. Our mission is to create a safe place to work, live, and play, and to do that through community-oriented policing, intelligence-led policing, and precision policing. Looking at our April crime stats, the biggest takeaway on this slide, if you can see, April 2024 to April 2025, our larceny thefts went from seventy-seven down to fifty-seven, and our motor vehicle thefts dropped by a couple as well. We'll talk more about how those were affected in a later slide. Our Part One offenses, as you can see, in April 2024 were ninety-two, and in April 2025 dropped down to seventy-one, which is considered within the acceptable range for our department's standards. So, this slide right here is, talks about the cost of crime at Walmart. So, the city of Durango and Walmart recognize the importance for collaboration and partnerships to better address ongoing crime trends affecting the community, their store, and the police department. One of the councils recently asked about the cost of theft at Walmart and what that ranges to. And if you're looking at the information provider on this slide, it averages to about thirty-two to thirty-six thousand dollars per year between call-response, reports, time-on follow-up, you know, working with the establishment. you know, working with the establishment. That coupled with the fact that Walmart in many cities across the nation is a target for theft because large box stores have a harder time combating that theft due to self checkout stands and staffing. Durango PD does a lot of hotspot extra patrols at establishments to include City Market, Walmart, Albertsons and other high crime trend areas. Our proximity to state borders can also be a challenging hurdle as thefts are often not extraditable from one state to another, i.e. New Mexico to Colorado. This coupled with personal recognizance bonds for those arrested can give the perception that theft is a non-serious crime. So recently Commander Nick Stacy reached out on behalf of Chief Current in January 2025 to Walmart to find outside the box thinking on how we could prevent theft on a collaborative effort. Walmart hired additional loss prevention staff. Initially, this created a problem because there are more staff inside the store. We're calling police for more responses because they were discovering more theft. So initially we saw a spike go up. As their staff worked with our department to get proper training and to understand that they could have the ability to intercept theft before it happened, we saw our theft start to drop down. Their loss prevention staff now is informing us that they are saving approximately $30,000 of theft over the last month or so in prevented theft from the store. This partnership helped also build a relationship for the national organized crime blitz where officers were able to partner with Walmart staff and walk with them both in uniform and undercover for a day and kind of teach them what we're looking for and how they're showing us how their systems work. And so we can better build that collaborative relationship. The next slide talks about citations, accidents and contacts. Notable increase is 34% for our accidents, I'm sorry, for our citations. And we are seeing that citations are up, accidents are down and traffic contacts are up as well. So that's good to see. That shows proactive policing. Proactive policing means that our officers are able to get on the street and actually look for crime versus being responsive to crimes that are just happening and we're getting called to them. We're trying to get this pushed forward with more proactive policing as the summer months set in obviously being the busier time of the year. On House Bill 1147, this was the fairness and transparency and muni court bill, House bill. And Governor Polis vetoed that bill. The takeaways on this were that muni courts are muni courts are to charge outside of state equivalency. So they can use different charging levels than the state equivalency for specific crimes. And that could include things like theft, trespassing, assault, so on and so forth. It also runs counter to previous bills that the governor signed to give more tools to municipalities to improve public safety. And we would like to thank Judge Margison and Chief Current for their work on testimony and input on this bill as it was in opposition. Camp cleanups are, camp cleanups are going well. As we know, Purple Cliffs was a large problem a number of years ago. And we want to remain vigilant and not have Purple Cliffs pop up again because it creates, you know, a number of different issues with cleanups and biohazards and theft and other crimes that surround that. We had a significant cleanup behind the tech center recently, a few weeks ago. And the majority of campsites had, we could fill up almost an entire milk jug of, for needles, for exposed needles. So it's important to remember that hard drugs in the state of Colorado under four grams are a misdemeanor. So a lot of our campsites that we're discovering out there that are officers and our civilians, our rangers and our code enforcement officers are cleaning up are riddled with a number of different needles. We collected approximately 12 cubic yards of trash from just a few camps that we cleaned up on city property. And they were camping between city property and county property, which helped us build a relationship La Plata County and work with their their personnel who also have a dump truck and some other materials where we were able to load up in a conjoined effort, their camps and our camps, since they're in the same area and really kind of work together at making sure these camps are cleaned up, that they're, if they, you know, are anywhere in our city that we're getting them, you know, proper information of where they need to go or how they can go about, you know, responding to, you know, our notices, our 24 hour notices for camping. And that takes us to any questions that you all might have.
All righty, Kip.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate that. Just a couple of small questions. Thanks for all the work on the cleanup of the camps. That's just a tedious part of the job and I really do appreciate everybody's work there. On the Walmart piece, was that inclusive of any issues that are happening in the parking lot? Or is it mostly related to theft within the building itself?
That's related to all, everywhere that Walmart parking lot encompasses. So that's everything from suspicious contacts, parking issues. That could include theft within the store. It can include the trolley stop. You know, we have a number of different issues over there as well, so.
And is there, is there a applicable set number two category? Walmart's got the largest amount of our attention. Is the number two very far behind it or is this endemic for big box stores, high traffic areas you mentioned?
We, so we see a lot of theft among Walmarts across the nation. They're a target store. Our biggest thing that we recognized was Albertsons recently. Was a close second and a lot of their thefts being in the central business district. And they were able to secure private security. And upon securing private security, we watched their theft numbers start to drop as well.
So there's something here to be said for making them aware of how often we're visiting them and them proactively doing some prevention efforts inside the walls.
Yes.
Great. Thanks so much.
Dave, do you have any questions? I was curious. Okay, so we don't have a needle exchange here in La Plata County in the city of Durango for all the needles that you're finding?
I am not 100% certain on that answer. I can have the chief follow up with you on that. I know that the Durango Police Department has a needle. You can come drop off needles at the police department. But I don't know if there's a more local or, you know, a different environment for that. I can have a chief follow up with that.
All right, that'd be great. And I was just curious, was there any extra bike patrols on the art trails, the river trails at all?
Yes. So that was, we'll be presenting on that a little bit later. We've had a number of increased patrols, both patrol patrols and bike patrols on the Anus River Trail. As summer months kick up, we see a lot more officers that will be getting out there on those patrols as well. And we are looking at a full time employee position, a park ranger that will be primarily dedicated to the Anus River Trail to address different violations and behavior on the river trail.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for me?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So let me just ask, is there any programs available for, with businesses in the city for crime prevention?
Can you elaborate that a little bit?
You know, I just, I know in other cities, there's like a sort of, it would, it would, could have been referred to like a business against crime network.
Okay.
Does something like that exist?
We, I'm not specifically sure if something dedicated like that exists. But we are working with the businesses on a level of trying to get them to recognize some of these crime trends with us. And that's kind of what this presentation was highlighting was Albertsons, we didn't highlight on this one, but Walmart specifically, trying to work towards solving problems, not just through a police officer lens.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. Perhaps there are other ways to get all of the businesses involved in crime prevention. I know there's techniques that you all use that perhaps could be shared with the community.
Sure.
Another question I have regarding the cleanup. You mentioned that you work with the county. Are there any other partners that you work with to help when you go to encampments?
Yes. So we work with the Community Southwest Alliance. And we also work with Manna. So we, we partner with Manna regularly. When we post a 24 or 72 hour notice on a camp that says, hey, you know, we're going to be here in 24 hours to clean up your camp. If you're here, you know, great, please clean it up yourself. If you're not here, we're going to take your items. What ends up resulting from that a lot of times is we also send that notice over to Manna. And then so Manna has the opportunity to reach out to the client as well before we go ahead and remove anything.
And so just expanding on that, when you mentioned that you have partners with a cleanup, do you have an idea of how much you're spending each time you go to clean up? And you mentioned that there's some nonprofits, but you didn't talk about, you know, perhaps waste management or public works or anybody else that goes out to address that?
So we, the chief current, just a few weeks ago, had asked me to work on building up the numbers and what that is. I don't have those readily available for us today and I don't want to throw out a number that would be inaccurate. But I hope that by the next city council meeting, we will have something like that. We are also working on a dashboard that would be visible to city council that would track not only the man hours spent on cleanups, but also the related costs, how many camps there are, how many ones have been advised and cleaned up. We're working with GIS on that and they've been a huge partnership in helping us organize ourselves.
Okay. And how often do you do cleanups?
We do cleanups twice a week. So typically on Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Okay. And you're busy? And would you say that there's, is it every week? Typically every, like every month, twice a week?
So we're doing, we'll do smaller camp cleanups throughout the, you know, smaller days. But when we have a larger camp cleanup, like we go up to tech center, almost every week we're pulling out loads of trash. Even if it's not us cleaning up, a lot of people that, you know, they'll camp overnight and then they clean up their camp. We never see them. They'll leave bags of trash along the trail. So even our officers and civilians that are walking the path on their way to discover other camps are recognizing these bags of trash and they load them up and take them out as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica, you got any questions?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next presentation is our Parks and Recreation Monthly Report.
Hello. How's everybody doing? Thank you. Hey, everybody. I'm Owen Towne. I'm the natural resource manager with Parks and Rec. I work for Scott McLean and Kelly Schmidt. I'm here to give you a quick presentation and orientation on a land donation that has come our way. So I'll go through a brief description of the land, kind of orient you where the property is, go over some of the reasons why it's being offered for donation. We'll look at some of the alignment with the community and city goals. I'll give you a brief photo tour. We'll look at some costs and then discuss next steps. So the property for donation here is this teal pin drop. The blue dot is downtown Durango where we are. And the yellow circle is Three Springs. So it's out towards Three Springs on the new Grandview Roundabout where the Maverick and McDonald's are being built. So here's the properties outlined in green. Collectively, it's about 15 acres. You can see there just to the south of it is the Maverick Gas Station and the new McDonald's. To the west and north is all Bureau of Land Management land. It's also currently within the existing city limits. A few of the amenities that are existing around and in this property, to the left there, to the, to the west, we've got the Cowboy Trail. It's a public trail, natural surface on the BLM, BLM managed trail. There's a gravel access road that cuts through the property and up onto the Mesa, which accesses some energy development up there. We've got down in the lower corner, that blue rectangle is the city's water booster station, which helps pump the water up to the water tank up by the hospital. So a really important piece of infrastructure there. We've also got a shared use path and a transit stop along Wilson Gulch adjacent to the property. So as I said, it's 15 acres of land. The assessed value of these two parcels contiguous is about $4.4 million. So they're certainly highly valuable properties. And the current owners is South Fork Gateway LLC. So why does South Fork Gateway LLC want to donate the land to the city? Well, you know, currently these parcels are pretty difficult to develop, mostly due to topography, sort of the existing conditions out there. It's not impossible, but maybe not the best use for it right now. So the owners have expressed a serious interest in providing this as a public space for recreation, which, you know, aside from just the obvious benefit of that amenity for the community, it may also help to encourage some further development in the area and activate that place a little more than just McDonald's and Maverick has. It gives people another reason to go out there, which, you know, would seem to be good for the overall development. So let's look at how this property may align with the community and city goals. So in 2020, there was a Parks Open Space and Trails and Recreation Master Plan that was done. It was a comprehensive plan that was put together, really heavily involved with community input. And in that, there was a series of open space values that were identified. And I won't read all these for you now, but needless to say, our opinion is that this property checks almost all of those, aside from which bleeds off the bottom of the slide there, the agricultural lands preservation, but whatever that is, 11 out of 12 is pretty good. In the master plan, there was also four key landscapes for preservation identified. Those are the mesas and meadows, steep slopes, hazardous landscapes, urban interface, wildlands and the heritage and working lands. And again, we got three out of four with this property. So it definitely seems to be checking all the boxes, at least as far as the community identified for what kind of properties we want to look at acquiring or adopting into the public's open spaces. Looking at our 24 strategic plan and our purpose three, the safety and quality of life, this certainly aligns with the ongoing preservation, acquisition of quality parks, trails and natural lands. I'll give you a quick photo tour here and do my best to narrate as we go through. So here's sort of the south end of the property. You come up a little hill past the booster station and it sort of opens up into this flat area. And we're looking maybe northwest. Most of that hillside you see in the background is the subject parcels. As you work your way up this gravel road, it's kind of got this nice gentle winding grade. And very quickly you get a great view looking back to the east over the roundabout and Wilson Gulch. Down there in the corner, you can see the Maverick Gas Station and McDonald's. And so these, these parcels abut those developments. View to the south, you can see the Highway 550 heading south, the new bridges, some forested land. It comprised mostly of pinyon junipers. A lot of them are really pretty established stands, really old trees, really nice mature vegetation in the area. And as you come out on top of the hill, the next door neighbor is the CNJ Gravel BLM Mining Lease. So kind of an interesting photo there. And at that same place, if you turn a little bit more to the west, you get this really striking skyline with the La Plata Mountains and opening up into the BLM lands up into Grandview. Right there at that same point, you can see there's already at the bottom of the screen there, a small social trail that connects over to the Cowboy Trail. So this, you know, gravel road in this property certainly provides a very easy link to that broader Grandview Trail system. All throughout the property, it's got really unique and really well established native vegetation, cactuses, some native grasses. Overall, a really interesting and neat piece of property. And it certainly has some very unique landscapes with this volcanic ash and geology going on. It also has a few existing conditions worth noting. Next to the property, there's quite a bit of oil and gas infrastructure, some wells, some pipelines. There's noxious weeds in that kind of flat meadow. They're really isolated there. It's not spread throughout the property. So fairly easy to identify and control, but definitely a well established community. There's also some erosion issues with some run on and runoff. And I think that's, you know, really mostly due just to the nature of the soils in that property. But certainly worth noting. So let's look at what some of the future uses and future costs might be with this property. You know, the most obvious one is certainly to create some sort of trailhead there, which would have an associated recreational trail that either goes through or loops around the property, which provides that connectivity from Three Springs to the B L M Trail System, and then by proxy to the city's greater Trail System. Also, something worth considering is open space for the sake of open spaces. I think looking at the list of things identified in that master plan, the community certainly values just having open space. So bringing that into the public trust is definitely a benefit in and of itself. There would probably be certainly other uses for that land that maybe we just haven't looked at yet, but it's, it's not closing the door on anything by any means there. So potentially some sort of future developments of sorts, what that looks like, I won't speculate. Throwing a few costs out, if we were to look at some of these improvements, such as a trailhead, maybe some road improvements, it's quite a range of numbers there, but mostly that's if we were gonna develop a really, you know, paved road, paved parking with stormwater features versus just sort of a some gravel and grading and signage and fencing, maybe on the lower end. And then annual maintenance cost I put out there too, for you all to just kind of consider $4,500. That includes personnel, equipment, portable toilets, weed controls, road repairs and general upkeep. So, uh, community development and Parks and Rec is going down the road of creating a formal policy and process on reviewing and presenting and accepting these land donations or future acquisitions. And some of the items that have been identified in that draft policy is to get environmental assessment on the land, which the property owners have graciously done. It came back clear, there's no environmental issues that are identified with the property. We've begun quite a bit of our stakeholder engagement with the Bureau of Land Management. They're supportive of, of the potential donation. We've talked to Public Works with the booster station being on the land, which is currently in an easement. They certainly see the benefit of that transferring to the city with future development of that booster station expansion. It just makes the process and opportunity a lot smoother there. Here we are introducing it at study session for council's consideration. A few of the next steps we want to go through, assuming there's no major roadblocks. We'll iron out the terms of the donation through either a M O A memorandum of understanding or agreement. It'll get presented or included in a regular council meeting, either through ordinance or resolution or perhaps some other means. Then from there, it's just getting the quick claim deed signed and recorded. And of course, addressing any questions or requests for more information that you all may have. So, thank you very much, and would be happy to take any questions if you do have them.
You got any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Owen. So if we were to accept the property under the terms that have been proposed, can the future use be different than what's presented here?
Yes, I think that would certainly be an option and that could be written. We haven't really outlined any of the terms of acceptance, but I think it could certainly work with community development to include language. I don't think the property owners are necessarily would object to, you know, leaving the door open for some possible future development. But at this time, yeah, we haven't really gotten into that level.
And
Yeah, let's, anybody else got any question? She had one question, okay.
Oh, do I get four minutes?
No, no, let's, let's just take one question because it's taking too long. So go ahead, go ahead.
And so
Are you gonna ask another question?
I was, so the further question, now I've lost
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yep.
Just a tangential question, how, how fast do conveyances go? Is this a process that's very different? And I may need to lean on the city manager for this one, but.
Yeah, I think, assuming we got it presented in regular council, I would imagine it's a matter of weeks, really to draft up the paperwork, get it scheduled for closing.
So it would take three council meetings because it has to be done by ordinance.
Okay, so that's, yeah, just like I said, differently new to me, so there you go.
But weeks on your side, three council meetings, got it.
Yeah, great, thank you very much.
Okay, Dave?
And just to confirm, we don't need to annex, it's already within the city limits. They just want to convey the, the ownership of the property.
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Jessica. All right, and my only concern would be, it'd be a good idea to get rid of the noxious weeds.
Yes, yes. And from what we saw, it's primarily a single species that probably would respond pretty well to a chemical treatment. So yeah, it's, it's not out of question to keep that under control and certainly high on our priority.
All righty, well, thank you. Oh, did you remember your question?
So, um, thank you. So Owen, when you, um, so once we can, assuming that everything goes through and we, the property is conveyed and now we are responsible for maintaining the property. I noticed that there's some gravel roads, you know, sort of, is that, are we required to maintain that type of?
No, so the, the road itself, that one, the existing gravel road is, was put in by the energy companies that are up on B L M land. They have a, a energy lease up there. So they are fully required to maintain that roadway as long as they own that lease, which according to the B L M, they expect it to be quite a while. So if, if they were to eventually pull out, then the maintenance would drop to us, but we would certainly be able to dictate how we wanted to maintain it, whether we wanted it to become more of a trail or we wanted to keep it open for vehicle access. If that answers your question.
Does, just because I know that we have quite an extensive network and system, I think this is a great addition. I just wonder, is like, it's, it's very generous. At some point, is it too much? That's, I, but I suppose that will.
Absolutely, and that's, that's a really great point. And that's definitely something that in that policy that I spoke of is, is one of the primary sort of checks, is that the department heads can get together and discuss, yeah, is this too much to take on? Where are we at with, with budget? Where are we at with capacity? So I think it's certainly worth considering. Yeah. Thank you.
The next strategic goal area is reliable infrastructure and community connectivity.
Yes.
There's still one more with
Oh, I'm sorry.
Recreation, they haven't
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good afternoon, Marin Council. My name is Sarah Humphrey and I'm joined today with Commander Conroy, who you heard from, and Devin from Multimodal. We're here to present to you on Animus River Trail's safety and management. So as I said, this is a three-pronged approach. That's why we're all three here. I think we can each address different issues, concerns and questions within our specific areas. So just some general stats about the trail. This is just the Animus River Trail, not including the other hard surface connections. The trail is seven miles in length. There are sections that are over 40 years old. The width goes anywhere from eight to 14 feet, depending on where you're at. We totaled 88 points of access. These include public parking lots, connector trails, schools, businesses, roadways. As you're all aware, there's a myriad of uses on the Animus River Trail. You have pedestrians, walkers, runners, folks using accessibility devices, folks with strollers, people with their children, their dogs, both on leash and off, commuter cyclists, recreational cyclists, e-bike assisted cyclists, and then a variety of other electric devices being used as long, as well as skateboarders and quad and inline skaters. So to talk a little bit more about the four identified issues that have become behavioral issues that we're seeing on the river trail is Commander Conroy. He's going to address dogs off leash, the speeding, unauthorized recreational devices and the shared use path.
So recently we've been conducting increased Animus River Patrol patrols. And every summer we do this, we, we try to get out there more during the summertime because of higher visibility with pedestrians and whatnot. What have we seen through some of our patrol, patrols? We've seen dogs off leash, we've seen, seen dogs on leash, we've seen dogs on too long of leashes. But the biggest thing that we've seen is that when law enforcement is out and about, any dog that's off leash or on too long of a leash, the, the people that we're encountering grab their dog, put it on leash or pull in their leash. So it's aware that people are aware of the ordinance and that they are outside of that. So our educational efforts here, we have prioritized education in the past and Durango P D, as well as animal protection officers have conducted outreach based on educational opportunities. Animal protection even offers free leashes for dog owners who do not have their dog on a leash as part of their educational campaign. Our educational, uh, educational efforts moving forward, we've decided that it's probably time to move from education to a little bit more enforcement. What does that mean? That means that we have the full-time employee position that we're getting ready to launch as the open space ranger, who will be dedicated to the Animus River Trail. And this person will be doing contacts, citations for various different violations. Our data since 2024 at Durango P D is we've had 64, January of 2024, we've had 64 dog off leash incidents, 29 were officer created and only one resulted in a citation. And since January 2025, Animal Control has contacted 328 people for dogs off leash and issued seven citations. So we realized that we have been extremely educationally driven and perhaps we need to be moving more towards the enforcement. We conducted for our speeding, conducted 82 bicyclists and trail users were monitored through speed through our radar at different locations, including Memorial Park, behind the library, Schneider Park and behind the fish hatchery. Average speed of trail users between analog bikes and e-bikes, as well as skateboards, roller skaters and one person on an electric, a one-wheel device. We recognized that the average speed there was, like we said, between 11 to 12 miles an hour. And we are now having conversations about a 15 mile an hour speed limit as to also include careless and reckless operation on the Animus River Trail. Because even if somebody's going seven miles an hour and they go by somebody and they spook a family or whatnot, or, or run somebody over, that could still be considered too fast for present conditions. So we're also working on educational opportunities for the bike stores to hand out pamphlets that say what is allowed on the river trail, what's not allowed on the river trail, and then to talk to them about proper safety on these e-bikes, especially a lot of the younger trail users, because they're on e-bikes that are going faster than they would normally be going. So on this slide right here, we're talking about devices that are allowed. You can see class one and class two e-bikes are allowed on the river trail, as well as analog scooters, any analog bike, skates, bicycles. What are not allowed on the river trail is class three bicycles. This would include a higher speed, a lot like a higher speed limit basically, and these electric motorcycles, which we've seen a growing trend in in town. These are throttle-driven e-bikes that are not pedal assist and they have a maximum speed of somewhere between 46 to 48 miles an hour. We have made some efforts to try to stop these people. It is a little bit challenging, but we are getting better at how we're handling this. And as well as, you know, gas-powered vehicles and all those other types of vehicles on this list are not allowed on the river trail according to current ordinance. I'll hand it over to Devin King.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So Multimodal kind of got pulled into this group because we do a lot of bicycle and pedestrian education. So that's where we really kind of stepped in. And one of the things we did was we put out some temporary signs along the Animus River Trail prior to Memorial Day. And those signs were intended to just capture attention and then give a brief, hey, here's what's the expectation on the river trail. And we'll probably be pulling those soon. The intent was just to kind of put them out during peak periods and then pull them, change them locations and then put them in different locations. Shared use path indicator markings, which are the middle image on, on the slide in front of you, that we are proposing to put at six different locations along with the shared pathway sign. So Oxbow, 32nd Street Bridge, Fish Hatchery, Rotary, Schneider and Iris Parks, as well as Santa Rita Park. And so those locations are just, we know that they have high traffic. We've been working with Parks and Rec as the, I guess, to determine those locations as good spots to put that. And then, you know, as we kind of move forward, we can determine if there are other locations that need that. And then Parks and Recreation is also working on restriping of existing path markings. One other thing I'll add that's not on here is anytime we go to an event as Multimodal, we do have bike bells with us. And so that's also something that we are constantly providing free bike bells to folks and letting them know, hey, you know, ring your bell. We also do that with the students as well. Any questions?
And I, I saw earlier that it was for all hard surface trails within the city, but our primary focus is on the Animus River Trail, but that goes for any sidewalk like up Florida, you know, no one wheel devices, that sort of thing. Okay. But primary enforcement is focused on river trail. Okay, thank you.
All right, do you have any questions?
We don't currently have a speed limit. I was actually riding my bike to work the other day and I was like, is there a speed limit? There's no signs, there's no speed limit on the river trail. Okay, that's what I was wondering. Someone had asked me too, and I was like, I actually don't know, I don't know. Then. Yeah.
What looks like an unsafe speed, as well as what the average speed of our trail users are doing. Some professional, semi-professional bicyclists look like they weren't pedaling their legs hardly at all and they were doing 15 to 17 miles an hour. So we were taking that into consideration, kind of where we felt that the majority of people are doing 115 anyway. If there was, don't get me wrong, there were people going well above 50. And so just looked at all the data and grew up as kind of nowhere near any actual ordinance being launched, but we're just looking at the data to start having this conversation.
Well, I appreciate the three of you and the three departments coming together to try to do this the best way possible. And, you know, there's definitely spots that should be under 15 miles an hour, probably those slow speed zones like you talked about, which I think is great. And yeah, so the more education, the better. Thanks.
Shirley? Yep. Dave?
Is there any sort of technology currently available for people to put on their own bikes to know how fast they are going? Right, but I mean, but like mostly on e-bikes though, right? But I mean, if you had your
E-bikes have a speedometer on them that tells them how fast they're going. And then you can buy one for your analog bikes. I would say most people, unless they're big Strava people, maybe don't have them.
Yeah, I, I don't have one on my mountain bike because I just don't think it's, 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 it serves me very well to know how slow I'm going when I'm mountain biking. But yeah, is there any sort of like maybe partnership opportunity for us to like, you know, give those away? Or, you know, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of what, what potential there is to, I don't know, like, give people the right tools to be able to place themselves, right?
We can look into that, I don't know how much they are.
I don't either.
Yeah, I mean, I
Don't own one.
Bike bells are about 50 cents a bell, which is nice. So I may have to come ask for more budget.
Noted. Yeah, I mean, the bell only lets people know that they're coming, but if you're going 20, then the bell.
Yeah.
You know, neither here nor there, honestly, so, okay, I'm just more thinking out loud.
Yeah, do those work on the, it does low speeds?
I have no idea. I don't actually know the question to answer that.
Yeah.
Be funny.
Commander, do those, do those radar, independent radar units, do those work at low speeds?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so we only, um, just speeds for adults. Obviously, children would kind of skew it. So we took only for adults, the majority of people were not pedaling super hard. They were just kind of strolling and we even had a number of people that said, hey, how fast was that going for curiosity? And so, you know, but they'd stop and they'd ask us, you know, anytime somebody's in uniform on a river trail, we're getting a lot of visibility, so they're asking all sorts of questions. So it was good outreach as well.
We've also talked a little bit about the temporary signage, speed signage, if, if we can get it to register.
So as opposed to maybe giving something like that out to everyone, having the same sort of approach, a temporary signage that would allow folks using the trail to understand how fast they're actually traveling. Probably not a permanent installation so that we're not gunning for it, but just as an educational tool.
Speed cameras, tickets to the man.
I know an eighteen-year-old version of myself would be like, I want to see how fast I can hit this thing. Yeah. So something temporary for sure.
Okay. So I just have one comment. Okay. So I appreciate everybody coming together to try to change people's behavior. Because, you know, you can still put up the signs, you can patrol out there, you know, you can look at better ways to put a signage to make people slow down, but ultimately it's up to the community to watch out for each other. Do you have any thoughts on how we can do that besides just, you know, flyers or signs or maybe public announcements on the radio?
I think Devin and I have had this conversation for many years about cultural change and it takes time and persistence. And I think this multi-pronged approach, this isn't the first time we've all come together and tried to find a better solution, but I think we're more committed than we, not more committed, but just going in a different direction. We've tried education since I've been with the city. It's really not been very effective, I think, with PD and some deterrence and some additional outreach to bike shops at our community events when we're at the farmer's market. I think there's a lot of opportunity to get our cultural messaging out and put that pressure on the community. It's up to you. It's up to you to be a respectful trail user.
Alrighty, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott McLean, the Assistant Parks Director. And giving a quick update on the Smart 160 trail. Provided an update about a year ago. Some of this will be a little bit of repeat history for, for some council and then some of it will be new information. And we give an update on what's happened over that last year. So the Smart 160 shared use path is a trail connection from the southern terminus of this Amish River Trail east to the Three Springs neighborhood. And this is a vision that we've had, the community's had for a number of years. A long time we've been working on this. We've looked at a number of alignments, both on the south side of the highway and the north side. And believe that this alignment that we have now is the most feasible. So on the map, on the left side, the white line coming down, that's the extent of the Amish River Trail ending at River Road. And then Escalante is there on the left side, the middle school and Home Depot, the solid red line is a section of shared use path that we worked with the developer of the Rocket Apartments as that went in and underpass underneath Escalante to set up for a future connection. And then the dash line is the proposed location for the segments we have remaining. On the east side, the very top right corner is the hospital out at Three Springs. The pink on the very right side of the paper, that's the Southern Open Space City Park. And then the solid red line, the piece underneath the CDOT underpasses, CDOT constructed that portion of trail when they installed, built the underpass. And then everything from there to the east, the city developed with a grant from Federal Highways. So the portion in between the dash line, talk through that a little bit, this map I took from a presentation we did a year ago, the blue line at that point, we were still looking at two alternatives. We have resolved that to the lower one adjacent to the highway at this point and are working with a private property owner. The colors on the map, you can see the green shading, that's all BLM property. The pink is city property, the blue is private property and the yellow La Plata. So we've divided the remaining portions into four segments that kind of help us focus on each of the issues that we have with those segments. The two ends are where we have the most restrictions. So we're kind of working those two first. We've got more flexibility in the middle. Once we get those situated, we don't want to start with the middle and then find out we missed one of the ends and we got to come back or have a challenging inning there. So for twenty twenty-five, we have budget for design and really focusing on two pieces. The first is what we're calling segment one, which is the, we're gonna blow that up a little bit so that helps. Is coming on from River Road, one sixty, an at-grade crossing at the, the traffic light that's at that intersection to the Sail Barn Trailhead. And then from the Sail Barn Trailhead, climbing up to the railroad grade. So if you've done the soft surface trail, there's a pretty fairly steep, short switchback there. This is stretching it out so we meet our standards. And takes up quite a bit of real estate to get up to that point, but that gets us to the railroad grade, which is a nice flat grade. So the first segment ends there between the city, the east side of the city parcel, the pink and the blue, which is John Gilliland. So it gets us across that. But that main piece, we're dealing with the Bureau of Land Management. They have a permitting process for right-of-way, which we shared a year ago. Having the overall alignment puts us in a position where we can go to them. We've made an application for the right-of-way permit, had a number of meetings with them this spring on what that scoping looks like. So they, they take the project, have all their different disciplines, evaluate that. And then come back to us with, this is what you need to provide. So we've had a number of office meetings, a number of onsite meetings. We're waiting on that list from them at this point. But here are the things you need to provide so that we're comfortable with this. So one part of that is just the right-of-way that we need to get from them, their permitting process. The other two pieces that we're asking for is there's a seasonal closure on the BLM at this point for wildlife. So asking them to modify that so that if we have a shared use path, that it can be open year-round. And then that section is also not, e-bikes are not permitted on it. So asking them to modify that policy so that e-bikes would be permitted on the shared use path. So they've estimated or told us at the beginning that it's typically a six-month process from application to end. They've also shared with us here over the last year and a half, that they are short-staffed, running thin, doing the best they can. So, I mean, we're trying to keep poking at them when we can, making sure that we're responsive to get them information. But that's, that's where we're at with that first segment. It's still working with BLM, hopeful that this fall that we can get the permitting, some direction on that and be in a good place with them. On the west side, we'll go through it, I guess, a little bit. The second piece that blue is John Gilliland's piece, the one that between La Plata County and the city. That follows railroad grade. We seem to have general agreement with John Gilliland that that, that location does not affect his operations. The parcels to the north and the east is where he has concerns. So as we shared before, but there's a number of things there that you know, John, one is trying to maintain operations at the gravel pit. He's pulled his main access off of the roundabout as opposed to the highway at this point. So that makes a difference. But also trying to set up that property for future development. So the trail that we're, we're looking at is down along Wilson Gulch Drainage. It's going to require some fill, some culverts in there when we start working in the drainage and we start working with what it does to the floodplain. Both everything on the Three Springs side, but then he has interest in what that does to his parcel and that we're not increasing floodplain and lessening what he has to develop. So we've provided a trail alignment and modifications, kind of our consultant's first run at what happens to the floodplain, which actually increases his developable area. There, he's provided that information to his consultant to say, all right, this is the what I have left with inside my land, which is where those two residences are at the bottom of the hill off the highway. This is what kind of opportunity he might have in the future to develop that or sell to be developed. Another piece of where we've made progress this year is the pink city land, the triangle that's there south of John Gilliland. Mr. Gilliland had expressed interest in having some agreement with the city that if we donated a portion of that to him, that he, that would help his development. That piece of city land was donated to the city by previous owner for purposes of the Smart 160 trail. So this winter I had multiple conversations with the previous property owner. The way the agreement's written, you could probably push either way, but having a conversation with the property owner, he was very clear that that was not his intent for us to pass it on for somebody else to have a financial or a business gain with it. So we passed that information. That was part of, here's your, your boundary for the discussion for John. So so this point, John does have a consultant working on design and kind of keep checking in with him to see where he's at. And we're waiting on him to say, yes, that this alignment does work or there may be a little bit of modification. But then our goal for twenty-five with the design fee we have on that parcel would be to get to a thirty percent design that says this is our limits of a construction. This is how much grading we're going to have. And that then becomes the basis of what the information we need to have a formal agreement in writing, get that processed with Mr. Gilliland. That's, that is my update for now. So any questions?
Yes, Scott, thank you so much for all your diligence in this. Obviously, a lot of, I get a lot of feedback from Three Springs residents on, you know, this project specifically. So thanks for the, the update. The western end, that is currently at ninety percent design, is that correct? And so the last bit, we are waiting on for the, the BLM to get back with us or us to get back with them in terms of like what all they need. If we tie up all these loose ends with the BLM over the next probably what, four months-ish, five months, six months? Will that finish out that, that hundred percent design potentially?
So that, yes, that does set us up. So the goal is that we stopped at ninety percent, have both CDOT and the BLM review plans. If there's any minor modifications that come out of that review, we can have those made and have a final bid document set. Where we're at with a five-year budget is in that process right now. And we've got kind of three main big projects that we're working on. How do we prioritize? And that's Amish River Trail rebuilding, continuing the Durango Mesa Park projects and what's happening there, and then the Smart 160. So right now we've got construction for Smart 160 out a couple of years, just based on where we're at with budget numbers.
Okay. So even if we get this tied up, there's potential for a two years before this starts. Because of Durango Mesa and other projects within Art Corridor.
Correct.
And even though we have budgeted, what, I think there's what, three or four million dollars towards, towards this? If I remember right, didn't, didn't we, didn't we budget towards Smart 160? Because I thought we took a million dollars out of that, that Smart 160 budget to pay for Schneider Park pickleball courts.
That we've evolved, pertained, the way we've done the budget process where in the past we came up with a kind of a design, construction type amount that, that we pushed forward each year. And the way we've done it, what we asked for in twenty-five was just for fees for construction based on where we were at and knowing we needed to get through the BLM process before we could put it out to award. So that, that money that had been previously appropriated at the end of twenty-four went back into the overall fund for CIP projects and has been allocated for other projects where it is not in a fund specifically for Smart 160 at this point.
Okay. All right, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll try to think of, yeah. How best to proceed from here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If hypothetically, right, you have, you have a budget, right? We collect a sales tax that goes to Parks and Rec, a couple of them, and you have a budget. And if, for example, let's say Durango Mesa Park has a hiccup with the bike park or the BMX park decides not to go through for exponential number of years, it's not like you have a fund for one sixty that we took out of to go build Schneider Park. That's your, it's our Parks and Rec budget, right? That we have a prioritization. The council has, FAB board recommends to us, council approves, is that correct? Kind of ish.
If you want me to help you with this, Scott. Yes, that, that's correct. I think what you're looking at is annually you produce a budget. And I think where Scott was talking about, we would earmark the funding and we would continue to carry it forward. So what would happen is if the project didn't get done, it would just keep going and keep going and keep going. And there may be other projects to which we could have gotten done because they're ready for construction. So when it gets ready for construction, that's when the budgetary time comes for that year to allocate the funding for it. Otherwise, we're just holding on to money, anticipating when we may get all of this done. And at that point, we may miss out on the opportunity to do other projects that are ready to go.
My point is, even if we had said, here's whatever million dollars to build this right this very second, to this date, we still could not have built this because of the John Gilliland property, because of all these things. That's my, my point is that it's not like we're taking money away from our project. This is still a priority and hasn't, it hasn't changed from council. This is a priority, making sure, I mean, the River Trail is up to standard. There's still lots of pieces of that that need to be, you know, updated and upgraded and stuff. And then also Durango Mesa Park, that is an opportunity that presented itself a few years ago. We have adjusted, but all of these are, are priorities. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. So if something happens at Durango Mesa Park, we could shuffle this money because this connection here from Home Depot to that Sail Barn Trailhead, that's a pretty, I mean, lots of people use it, it could, even if the full Three Springs isn't ready to be done, John Gillum's dragging his feet, he's changing where he wants it, like whatever. That's a piece that we can take care of. Yes?
Correct. So we can, yes, there's the process that we can make that modification. If one of those stalls out for some reason, we can make that request to the Financial Advisory Board, to council to say, hey, we have an opportunity to, to bounce back. I think the other opportunity to even talk about is just being more looking at, at grand opportunities and seeing what we can find to help offset some of the costs for that.
I just.
For the project.
I know it's not your, it's not your fault that this project has taken so long. It's not Parks and Rec's fault. It's not, you know, I'm not blaming anyone, but it would be, I know residents have expected this project to go through and you know this. I'm saying this out loud so people know that they're heard kind of deal, that it would be a good step in the right direction, a good step of faith if we can kind of get going when we can, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, I think some kind of timeline that says what stages, where's the milestones that we can in between now and two years? I think if you're saying two years to the completion, what, how do we give people a, hey, we are progressing and here's a milestone we're planning to hit? That's always good. We're, we're all getting the questions. So anyway, thank you. But it's two years to start, right?
Correct.
We're going to finish in two years.
First start, but not completion of the, the whole project.
And, and I guess how long has this been on the list for, for Parks and Rec? I mean, how long has it, we've been talking about this as, as a priority?
It's been
right.
A decade at least. I mean, a lot of the initial work and the initial years where we're just kind of planning and finding the alignment and bouncing back and forth, but then. More so into the details, I would say, the last two, three years.
Sure. Yeah, I guess because I, I'm just so attached to this because of by virtue of where I live and how much I talk about this literally almost every day with, with constituents out in Three Springs. Two years seems like a lot, especially since we've been having this conversation about Smart 160 for as long as we have. And again, I totally understand. This is nobody's fault. This is, this is just kind of where things are at. I would just like to really impress upon how, if there is an opportunity to, to move forward faster than two years, that would be awesome. I mean, we have people that, that have been coming to every meeting, you know, being champions for this. And I, now I've got to go back and tell them like, all right, well, we got all these ducks in a row, but it's still going to be two years before we even get start. Not foregoing anything else that happens in those two years and that could potentially push it back as well. So yeah. Yeah, it is what it is at this point, but if there is an opportunity to, to put this place in front of something that we can, then I think that would be beneficial for, for everybody for sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Now the next goal area is reliable infrastructure and community connectivity with our Transportation Department monthly report. Thank you, Fay. Sarah Hill, Transportation Director. I have a very quick update from our department for you all. We have officially kicked off Zero Fair Summer. So that means all fixed route, paratransit and evening transit service is free until the end of August. And this is its fourth year of this program. It's very well-loved. We usually see about a twelve percent ridership increase during the months that the fair is free. And of course, city council paid for this through your discretionary use of the lodgers tax. So thank you very much for that. We also received a grant to help stretch the local dollars and include the evening microtransit service this year for the first time. So that's very exciting. And then, excuse me. Secondly, Durango Outside launches tomorrow and this is an on-demand service that's going to run daily through the end of September from ten AM to six PM. And it's going to be serving recreational areas within the city. So we've got Lake Night Horse, Oxbow, all of our several river put-ins and takeouts. And it's going to be serving, uh, recreational areas within the city. So we've got Lake Night Horse, Oxbow, all of our several river put-ins and takeouts, our trailheads. We, you can book a ride on the Durango app, which is QR coded right here. It's the same app, uh, that you use for evening service as well. This is a pilot project, uh, so it's not part of Free Fair Summer. We are charging two dollars per ride per person, um, while it is a pilot service. Uh, I was going to give you a very quick snapshot of our ridership trends over the last five years, just so you kind of have an idea of how we're growing. This is going to be really quick. Um, the most recent ridership data that we have is through April. So I've got January, February, March, and April for the last five years here. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, that's the green color there in the middle. That was the year that we launched the One Sixty West and the Crestview route, and then also the Durango Evening Transit. So that, um, that kind of addresses that large ridership jump that we have there. And then since then, we've just been increasing ridership through consistent service delivery. We've been able to make small service tweaks based on the feedback that we receive in our ridership survey. Um, we give about four hundred and sixty thousand rides a year now. Um, then we're kicking off our community engagement, uh, tomorrow for the thirty percent design of downtown's next step. Uh, Clancy is going to go into a little bit greater detail on this, but I just wanted to give a little extra highlight on these meeting dates since this project is so important to the community. Um, there are four different meeting opportunities. They're all formatted the same, but they're intended to target a wide group of, or a different specific groups within the community. After our outreach in June, we will be reporting on everything that we heard at the Engage Forum in July, on July twenty-second. Um, and then in May, a group of staff met with DFPD, uh, with the ladder truck, truck apparatus out just to test its maneuverability with the curb extensions and the pedlets. So pictured here is Devin King and Chief Randy Black up at the top of the ladder there. Um, Clean Commute Day is coming up on June twenty-fifth. This is a really fun opportunity to just celebrate Durango's, uh, commuter cycling culture. Uh, we, we're going to have eight different, uh, morning stations this year that are all listed on this slide all throughout town. There'll be breakfast, refreshments, and swag at all of those locations. And then there is an after-party, uh, in front of Anarchy Brewing across from Horse Gulch that night. Uh, in conjunction with Clean Commute Day, we also have our commuter challenge, which kicks off the week before Clean Commute Day. Uh, lots of prizes for the team that can, uh, track and log the most clean commutes. If city council wants to have a team, we're open to that. You don't have to answer now. You can sleep on it. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to provide a really quick update on our parking program for local employees. We've gotten really awesome feedback from businesses downtown, and I just wanted to pass along their thanks to you uh, for funding this through the discretionary lodgers tax as well. And the first three weeks of the program, we sold fifty-three permits to nineteen different businesses. And six of those were brand new businesses that have never participated in a parking program before. So that is all I have for you. Open to questions.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Sarah. Can you go back to your first slide, um, that talks about this zero fare? We'll get you there. The, um, is that the trend, which is the program that functions like an Uber?
That is Durango.
Which is different from this Durango Outside.
Yes. So the Durango Outside is an expansion of that on-demand micro transit. Durango on-demand evening service is five PM to midnight every day, and that's year-round. Uh, that's never been part of our Free Fair Summer before, but it is this year because we, uh, received a small grant to help fund that in addition to the lodgers tax.
Well, I've gotten some feedback from constituents and they love it. So I hope that we can continue that service, especially people that work nights.
Yes.
That's been the biggest, um, where I've heard comments that it was very helpful to have service after hours. Um, and so you, you don't have any feedback for that or any, uh, information on that program?
Yeah, I have tons of feedback, uh, or I have tons of information, but yeah, we have, we give about, um, seventeen hundred rides a month on that service. And the largest destination information that we get shows that it is, you know, the trips are originating downtown. And then they are going to workforce affordable housing communities. And it's right around, you know, ten thirty to eleven thirty at night. So we know that it really is servicing employees and getting them home, um, in the, in a affordable way.
Um, was the target, so I guess I've heard mixed things. The target was to eliminate drunk driving or the target was to help the service?
Well, you know, it's the, the beauty of public transit. It serves a mon, a number of different purposes, but, um, yeah, our target was, well, the feedback that we received that initiated the service was from, from employees that worked late hours and non-traditional shifts downtown. Um, so that was what we were trying to solve, but since it is open to anyone and it is public transit, then it can be used to solve a number of different issues.
Well, thank you very much for your innovative programs. I think these are awesome. So as we can continue to support, um, some of these. Um, and, and you mentioned these are all grant funded, or this is from the lodgers tax, but others are from grants?
The Durango Outside is a pilot project that is funded through a grant. So we're going to be, you know, getting a lot of data and, um, monitoring the cost of that, see how well it's used. Uh, and then that would be part of a budget proposal into the future.
Sarah, real quick, we had groups from Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Boys and Girls Club ask about how to get a group of kids with tubes.
Totally.
How do you, how, how's that work?
Groups are, uh, welcome. Uh, the capacity depends on whatever bus is assigned, so it will be somewhere between eight and twelve passengers. Uh, if they're larger groups, we can accommodate that with a heads up. Uh, just calling the Durango Transit Line, we schedule groups frequently. So yeah, we can, we can make that happen. The Durango Outside is on demand right now, so uh, as available, we would be able to accommodate that. But for groups like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we're happy to get that scheduled and have a dedicated ride for them.
And they can bring gear with them? Okay, cool. Thanks.
Next up is our Aviation Department monthly report with Tony Vicary.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tony Vicary, Aviation Director at the Durango Lopata County Airport with a quick monthly report on airport operations. Uh, starting off, just a quick rundown on the numbers, uh, through April, airport or airline traffic rather is up eleven percent. So another strong growth year on track here in twenty twenty-five. Notably, that's on only a four percent increase in seat capacity. So our load factors or percent of seats filled on the airline traffic at the airport continues to be at record-setting levels, uh, well above eighty percent. Um, you can see the rest of our metrics from parking lot to rental cars, concession revenue up across the board, reflecting pretty strong conditions overall at the airport so far in twenty twenty-five. Just a quick visual representation of airline traffic through the first four months of the year. Um, as you can see, that's that plus eleven percent, uh, so far year-to-date. Uh, on the airline route network, a couple of changes to, to note here, we are entering peak season with the June airline schedule. Uh, United continues to offer a consistent six daily flights back and forth to Denver International. American ramps up seasonality during June and through the bulk of the summer. They'll operate four to five daily flights into Dallas-Fort Worth. Um, also, United is officially expanding out their Houston network. That started over Memorial Weekend on weekends. And then on the twenty-sixth of June, we'll expand to daily service through mid to late August. That's the first time we've seen daily Houston service in the history of the airport. So this is a pretty major development in terms of expanding that route opportunity with United. Um, also, uh, after this was published, we did note that American Airlines in September will be expanding their Dallas, uh, service to up gauge is what we call it, which is the utilization of larger aircraft. Uh, they've traditionally flown almost exclusively regional jet aircraft. In September, they'll be changing their fleet utilization to go to two of their three daily Dallas departures on Airbus A three nineteen equipment. That matches what United's done in our market over the last two years, expanding to, um, offer up to two daily mainline flights on Airbus and Boeing equipment. So continuing to see that industry change here as we see larger and larger equipment flying into the market. Uh, on the project front, a couple of highlights here. Terminal Expansion Phase One B continues to move along swiftly. Uh, we're on track currently for a public opening of that first sub-phase of the project, which is the new baggage claim and arrival space in August. So council can anticipate, uh, a ribbon-cutting event of some sort coming up, uh, towards the end of the summer. Now, we're also cruising along in our wastewater system upgrade project, recently took delivery on a new aircraft rescue firefighting vehicle, which is now in service at the airport. And we're currently under construction on our Phase Two Parking Lot Expansion Project, which will add a hundred and fifty paved parking spaces to our main lot on target to wrap that up by the end of July. Um, here you can see the rest of the long list of capital projects in progress at the airport. I won't go through these all line by line, but just keeping you updated on major updates um, as we move through our capital slate. And just wrapping up, just a few photos, you can see some developments on the terminal expansion. On the left, you can see some of the new space that'll be open in August, that baggage claim and arrival space. And then on the right, you see some examples of interior renovations. Uh, those are newly renovated airline ticket counter areas that now have, uh, in-floor kiosk locations as well as updates to all the finishes in those spaces. Um, here you can just see a couple of snapshots of our wastewater upgrade project. For those who aren't aware, the airport does, uh, own, maintain, and operate its own water and wastewater utility services, which is a little bit unique. Uh, most airports don't do that, but given our geographic isolation, when lack of central utility services, those are both, uh, products of the airport. And then lastly, uh, the new aircraft rescue firefighting vehicle at the airport, um, coolest fire truck in town in my personal biased opinion. Uh, our new staff, our staffer still training and learning on that piece of equipment, uh, but a great addition to our fleet, uh, in the life safety side. So with that, happy to take any questions.
We can talk about it.
Mayor, I've got a question. Tony, can you talk a little bit about the concessions? And I, I, I know you've done a great job in, in, um, providing information to local folks who might be interested in trying to run the concessions out there. I, I know just anecdotally, we're having a hard time finding somebody that can, can pull it all together. Um, given the timelines and those things. So, uh, can you just provide an update on when your deadlines are and, and any kind of work you might be doing?
Yeah, yep. So overall basics, the concessions at the airport consist of a number of areas. We have food, beverage concessions, retail concessions, in-terminal advertising, ATM, and rental car. Those are the various concession agreements we have. In each case, we competitively bid those through RFP or Request for Proposal processes to allow third-party businesses to put forward proposals to conduct those concessions at the airport. Um, the ones that I think, uh, Counselor Coso is referencing are ones that we're planning to issue RFPs in the near future, which are food, beverage, and retail. Um, I recently met with the local first chamber and a variety of community members, business owners, uh, outlining what those processes are going to look for us. Our current concession agreements in each of those areas are strategically scheduled to expire in twenty twenty-six, which is in alignment with the approximate date of when new facilities at the airport will be coming online with our construction. So we'll be having brand-new food, beverage, and retail opportunities. So the intent is the existing agreements will expire and then allow for new occupants to potentially come in or incumbents, depending on who's successful in the proposal process. Uh, right now, our timeline in, uh, the late June meeting, our Airport Commission will be reviewing draft RFPs for both of those opportunities. And we're currently anticipating those being issued sometime in the July timeframe. This is quite a bit ahead of the actual occupancy. The resulting occupancy of these will be in twenty twenty-six. We're bidding these way ahead, uh, largely because there's going to be some significant capital investments and um, design efforts needed by the successful concessionaires to build out the space. These are brand-new spaces that have never been occupied. And as part of the, it's a expectation here is the capital investment to sort of build out that space. So we're building these out almost a year, or bidding these out rather, almost a year in advance of occupancy to allow those entities to have time to work with our construction team to build out those spaces. So, uh, long story short, any, you know, interested entities in the community that wish to either be potential prime concessionaires or, uh, subcontractors to other primes, now's the time to be paying attention to this. We anticipate, like I said, in the July timeframe, likely kicking off this RFP process. Be important to attend pre-bid meetings, learn more about the opportunities, and look for partnerships that might exist out there.
I think some of the hurdles are really around certifications that are required. Obviously, a lot of, um, requirements for the concessionaires. Um, what, what options do we have to provide a, a leg up for local, smaller businesses that aren't a national entity that's trying to bid on this?
Yeah, no, good question. Um, there are some unique certifications or aspects of, of our contracts that are federally required. So we maintain what's called a Airport Concession Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program or ACDBE. Um, this is a federal requirement, something we're mandated to do. And as part of that ACDB or B, ACDBE program, we're actually, uh, not allowed to use local preference as a scoring criteria in any concession selection because the DBE program on the federal level is designed towards getting disadvantaged business ownership, women and minority groups to be able to have opportunities. It's not based on location. So it's not intended to be able to get a Durango small business in there. It's about getting a DBE to potentially participate in opportunities regardless of where they're from. Um, that being said, and what I tried to, um, you know, pass along in, in our meeting with chamber members recently is being a DBE firm is not in any way a requirement to participate in this process. You do not have to be a DBE. However, there is requirements for good faith efforts to have DBE participation with this, um, on that front. So that's kind of a key consideration for folks to recognize. It's not DBE only by any stretch. That's not the intent of those programs. It's to encourage good faith effort to recruit participation up to a certain percentage point, um, effectively is kind of how that looks. And, you know, for small businesses, particularly truly small businesses that might not be capable of managing a full restaurant operation at the airport, don't have the staffing or inventory expertise to do that. Really, the best way to participate in these kind of opportunities would be to be potential suppliers or partners with prime concessionaires. So whether that's the incumbent entity at the airport or other potential bidders, attending those pre-bid meetings, meeting up with the prime concessionaires and offering them products to say, you know, I produce coffee here locally, for example, um, I want to be a partner in your bid process so that it could be XYZ national firm potentially bidding on this. But as part of their proposal, they're submitting for review, it might have ABC Local Coffee Company as their sort of coffee provider, or enter any name that you might wish in terms of local entities.
Hard to believe that somebody local, a desert sun, could beat out on price if it was a national vendor that was running the concessions. It's hard to believe that they could beat out on price of Starbucks or something along those lines that wouldn't have the representation, though. Fair to say?
Yeah, I think that's fair. Um, you know, the RFPs aren't bid out on, on price necessarily, so that's not necessarily a scoring criteria we look at. Um, but, you know, in terms of, um, you know, if, if a national chain is coming in to run this and is looking for a coffee partner using this example, you know, of course, price is a consideration they're going to look like, look at. So if you have a local vendor that is a higher price point, it can be a tougher sell to come in and say, you know, you should vend my coffee because the national firm is looking what kind of margin they can clear on that. Um, but what we try to do when we write our RFPs in particular, although I mentioned we can't score for true local preference, we do have multiple scoring criteria we utilize that reference the placement of local products and, you know, in, in sort of pitching the region essentially. So what we hope is that in this process, we are encouraging prime concessionaires in particular to partner with local firms. We've seen that to some degree. Our current partner or, uh, current food and beverage concessionaire, um, it, you know, offers the full line of SCAB beverages, for example, at the airport. And there's some other product placements that exist, um, but there's some complexity there.
And Public Works is up next.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Laura Rick from Public Works. Uh, we're going to utilize our Public Works monthly update to bring you an update on the Stormwater Focus Group this month. So since we have a couple new members on council that were not here in November when interim Public Works Director, uh, Bob Lowry gave a presentation, kind of do a little bit of background first. So in November of last year, Public Works gave a presentation to council outlining the need for a dedicated funding source for the Stormwater Management Program. Council adopted a resolution shown here on the left, uh, directing city manager to create a citizens focus group to study options for a funding source and report their findings and a recommendation back to Fab and Council. We should note that the resolution states the city manager determined the need for a dedicated funding source does exist. Ten citizens signed up for the focus group and we had four sessions over the last five months. The members of the focus group had a pretty diverse background from engineers and local business owners to environmental organizations, schools, and churches, and they were really engaged in each of our sessions. We're really appreciative for them uh, volunteering their time since January and providing us such valuable input. The first session was a general overview of our MS four permit and stormwater management program. MS four stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. As uh, that is what we have here. We don't have a combined system, so wastewater and the storm don't go into the same place here. We also discussed state and federal regulations and the current state and the desired state of our stormwater management program. The second session, we covered the costs of service for our program, operations and maintenance costs, the backlog of capital improvement projects that we have, as well as an overview of the different types of funding options used nationally. The third session, we spent focusing on fee structures and examples, including credits and/or waivers. And then after that third session, we sent out a survey to all the focus group members to gather their feedback on what they've learned so far, what we've discussed so far, on all the topics covered, and then uh, options weighed. So the fourth session was just a recap of everything we've talked about. And then we reviewed the survey results. We talked about the next steps for the focus group itself, and then the next steps for the city. And then we reviewed the survey results. We talked about the next steps for the focus group itself, and then the next steps for the city. So before we go into the findings of the focus group, we need to talk about the elephant in the room. How much are we going to need to fund the stormwater, the stormwater management program? So staying very high level, because we don't have too much time here, we need about $53 million to fund all of the currently identified needs over the next 25 to 30 years. This includes $400,000 just to fund the existing MS4 program, which covers our annual permit, a staff of two, and what it costs to meet all of our permit requirements. It does not cover costs for future added staff, equipment needs, nor the ability to meet our increasingly strict regulations. This number also includes approximately $1.85 million in annual maintenance costs. So because our Streets division is currently helping the stormwater management program, we don't have any dedicated maintenance staff on the stormwater team, so we have to share. And Streets performs reactionary maintenance only. So we're not going out and doing preventative maintenance. We're just going in after there's a storm and cleaning up the mess. The, the $1.85 million per year would also cover the identified need of five additional staff dedicated to this program and allow us to shift away from that reactionary and go more toward the preventative maintenance side of things, so that we would shift from maintaining just a handful of our public stormwater facilities to preventive maintenance of all 85 facilities that we have around the city. And we have a list of $51 million worth of capital improvement projects that need to be completed but have not been fully funded. And as with all of capital improvement projects, they can't all happen at the same time. So potentially one to two per year, spreading out over the next 25 to 30 years. And they're prioritized based on the list from the 2018 Stormwater Master Plan. So now we'll discuss the findings of the focus group. In session two, we discussed the pros and cons of the different types of funding methods, including implementing a stormwater tax versus a stormwater utility fee. The group generally agreed that a utility fee would be the most equitable, dependable, predictable, and flexible way to fund the stormwater management program. So a stormwater utility fee is a common funding mechanism in Colorado with over 70 government entities in the state utilizing fees based on impervious area calculations. And this mechanism gives us more predictable budget from year to year, and it can be addressed to use for multiple funding needs. Of the 70 entities that we surveyed in 2024, the residential stormwater fees ranged from a low of about $2 per month to a high of around $39, $40 per month, with the median right around 11. So that's basically the same as grabbing breakfast at Starbucks. When we asked the focus group, how should we prioritize our funding? They agreed that we need to prioritize the preventative maintenance first above the MS4 program and the capital improvements. We discussed multiple options for funding strategies using the stormwater utility fee. A two-part fee that has a fixed component and a variable component had the most support. And this is similar to the structure that we have for our water fees, where we have a base fee and then a fee depending on how much water you use. And this fee would apply to all parcels, and it would be very predictable revenue coming in for a stormwater enterprise fund. The variable fee portion of this would also be applied to all parcels, but it would vary depending on the amount of impervious area on each parcel. Impervious area means an area where the water can't soak into the ground. So that's, or it can't go from the building and come onto the ground. So this is like the footprints of any buildings, decks, sidewalks, driveways, et cetera. So we discussed two options for that variable fee. One option being based on the actual square footage of impervious area for each parcel. And our GIS team can actually pretty easily calculate this, and it can be updated regularly. It's also the most fair, because everybody would pay the same exact rate per square foot. And it would help incentivize reduction of impervious area on all the parcels. The other option we talked about for a variable fee would be a tiered structure based on the average impervious area, and it could be broken down to as many tiers as we want. But generally, it could be small, medium, and large. It's very difficult, though, to apply that to commercial properties. So they'd still likely have a different type of structure for them. All right, and the focus group generally agreed that because all parcels contribute to the stormwater system, all parcels should pay into the stormwater management program. Therefore, the idea of waivers was dismissed. And then we instead focused on credits or fee credits. We have a lot of developments within the city that have designed facilities to treat and reduce stormwater runoff. For example, the picture on this slide is from the Three Springs Development. So homeowners in Three Springs have already invested in stormwater management, because the development included engineered stormwater management systems. So when you purchased your home there, you already invested in that system. When we were considering the credit options, there was clear support for credit for properties with existing or new stormwater facilities. And credits could be given to, for improvements that lessen the amount of runoff going into the river, as well as those that improve the quality of the water that goes into the river, like bio swales, rain gardens, types of development like that. The exact amount of any credits would have to be determined parcel by parcel. But they could include something like reducing the overall square foot of impervious area or just having a percentage reduction on the bill. We're also looking at how other municipalities around Colorado are doing this, what has been successful, what has not been successful, and using best practices in stormwater management. So the next steps for the process are to have internal and external discussions examining the options for exemptions and/or credits. For example, schools, government buildings, churches, nonprofits. And then credits for things like detention basins, rain gardens, bio swales, other engineered structures on parcels. We need to determine and finalize a rate structure and an amount that enables us to cover the costs of service, as well as enable us to build up reserves within the Stormwater Enterprise Fund to be able to complete needed preventative maintenance and capital projects. We'll be presenting the findings, cost analysis, and a recommendation to the Financial Advisory Board in July. And we'll be continuing public engagement and feedback, hosting an Engage Durango event in September. And we'll be returning to a counselor, council regular meeting sometime in the fall to present our recommendations based on all of this feedback and based on our further cost analysis performed, timing of the implementation needed. We have our stormwater management people with us tonight. If you guys have any specific questions, otherwise I'm open for a few questions.
Thank you. I'm impressed with how you developed a plan since we didn't have anything, and now we've got a plan. So thank you very much. So you've been having questions?
Super impressed. We've been talking about how to fund this and make this a reality for a long time. And I'm, I'm just glad we had a group dive in and really take it's some of the pros and cons. Because we have, it's like, what, 2.25 million every single year that we're going to have to? Like, that's not even capital improvement projects, correct? Yeah, that's just maintenance and staff. And so it's a significant bite to try to take, and it's not easy to pass a tax on it.
Right, and, and it doesn't include infrastructure replacement either.
Okay, so I appreciate the hard work and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. So can you go back to the first slide, please, where you talk about the, the need, or maybe it's the second, second slide? And I'm sorry, in one of the slides, you talk about how much?
The elephant one?
And then the, okay, right here, thank you. So how much do we need? And so, and so the $53 million is how much we need today, not? And how long, how many years might we take to address this if it's past as presented?
Right, the, the 1.8 here is the maintenance that we have identified needs to happen and the staff that need to be, I guess, acquired to make that happen. The $51 million is the backlog of capital projects that we have, and the 400K is the existing cost of the MS4 program itself with two staff. We were considering adding another staff member or two to the actual administrative portion of the program itself. And then the other part of this was that amount of money on the elephant there, the $53 million, would be stretched out over 25 to 30 years.
Sure, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, not, I mean, not today. I mean, this is, this is looking toward the future, what we have identified as needs right now.
And would it go into, I mean, if, if this was approved, does it have an end date?
It would be similar to our other enterprise funds, where it would be just forever.
Yeah, yeah, forever. So can you go back to the exemptions, potential exemptions? So, and given the potential, say it's approved as presented, options, and this, should this be presented as adopted, as presented? That still gets us the number that you're looking for, the $53 million?
So the credits, we have looked into, as I said in the presentation, the group had decided since everyone contributes to the stormwater system, there should not be any exemptions or waivers to the fee. But there could be credits because of development that's already happened that would put into stormwater management. So we have looked at different scenarios where we have no credits, what that would look like as far as revenues. And we have looked into basically no credits or credits. And if we're looking at credits, what does that look like? So that part is pretty variable on what we could do. That has not been decided yet on what, what it would look like. But that's what the next several months is going to help us determine, gathering feedback on what credits would look like, and then what projected revenues could be. Sure, anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
The next item is under Engage and Inform Community with the Community Engagement Report.
Mayor and Council, I am aware that we're about five minutes before we have scheduled on the study session. So after this, we can be completed.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Clancy Nixon. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist. And I'm going to run through this really quickly for you. I just wanted to present our website numbers. So if you are not familiar with Engage Durango, that's our engagement site on our durangoco.gov website. We launched this in March of 2024, so it's been live just over a year. Our current registrations, where folks are actually going and signing up rather than just participating on a case-by-case basis, they actually go in and complete a profile. To date, we have 446 registrations. The number of projects, we have 37 that are on there. All-time followers, these are individuals that have followed projects, not the total follows of projects. We have over 400 individuals pressing that follow button on our projects. Contributions at the time that I created this was 2,529. And all-time unique visitors was over nearly 13,000. We're well over that now with the engagement efforts that we've been doing throughout May. So these numbers will change pretty significantly in the next presentation, just so you know, May was big. So, unique visitors, I think that that's a fun one to highlight, because we are a town of 19,000. And in just over a year, we are approaching our entire city population, which is a pretty cool comparison. If you're ever interested in seeing any numbers broken down, we can break them down by project. So if you want to see this presented differently, just let me know. Some highlighted engagement efforts through March and April. We had a neighborhood walk and roll at Chapman Hill with Mary Azzi. We did the Stormwater Focus Group throughout both of those months. And then the Animus High School projects were really, really fun. We had 11th grade humanities students in two classes come and present and do projects with us. So they did a documentary. They handed over the reins for Nerds Night Out trivia nights. They created a bingo card, those types of things, and they had a lot of fun doing it, and I had a great time with them as well, just to give them a better understanding of what we do as a municipal government. One of the key takeaways I wanted to share with you, and I'm bummed that Chief isn't here right now, but they came away from the interview with Chief Current in the documentary and said they didn't realize that police were on their side. So I thought that that was a really cool takeaway, pretty powerful interview in just a few minutes with them. March Engage Durango Forum, we had our largest turnout yet with 99 attendees. 75 were new, and the topic was Durango Mesa Park, obviously very popular, but really wonderful partnership with them and getting the word out about that forum. And then we did the West Side Welcome to the City event with the West Side Mobile Home Park being annexed. And it happened to fall on Dia de los Niños, which was really fun. So you see a picture there of Chief Current interacting with some folks over there. We had piñatas, and it truly felt like a celebration, just to highlight some of the services that we were doing over there as well. 100% of our survey respondents for our meetings that we've hosted up to today have said that they will attend a city meeting again. Another highlight from our survey from attendees, we asked folks where they hear about the meeting. And in the latest meeting, everyone named something different, from Nextdoor to Word of Mouth to KSUT. And I think that's important to highlight, just because the outreach efforts we're making as a team are working. So Downtown's Next Step Engagement coming tomorrow. We have the Business Owners Meeting that is happening at the Innovation Center, the FLC Center for Innovation, tomorrow, 8:30 to 10:30. That's taking place, that's in the main mall on the second floor, for those folks who don't know, followed by employees the following week on June 10th. That's at 11th Street Station. Residents, just a general area residents, it's not city residents, just in case you get questions about that. Anybody who lives in the region, we're asking them to show up to that meeting. An accessibility focus meeting. And then we're taking all of the feedback we receive in these four meetings, as well as a tourist, or a survey that's going out to tourists, and putting it all together and presenting it back out and closing that feedback loop with folks at the next Engage Durango Forum in July. So that's happening on July 22nd. So we're encouraging everybody to show up and calling on different stakeholder groups in hopes that we kind of catch their eyes in that marketing and press release situation. Some other engagement opportunities that are coming up. We have Nerds Night Out Trivia happening on June 12th at Esoterra. The Speed Management Plan Survey, we just closed that today. We have over 600 respondents, which I'm sure you'll get a full report on. And then Parks and Recreation, we launched a visioning board on Engage Durango as well, just to help with that updating the master plan. Any questions? Thank you very much.
4:45, that's all, Mayor?